Now it's four o'clock, we'll go ahead and begin our meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the January 6, 2015 agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the agenda for today. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on December 2, 2014.
My move that we approve the agendas of the December 2nd, what?
Minutes.
What did I say, agenda? Minutes. Minutes of the regular meeting of December 2nd.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting on December 2, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the financial report for November 2014.
This is Anderson with staff. The financial report before you is from going through November 30, 2014, which was just at about forty-two percent of our fiscal year. Looking through there, the percentages for each subsection. We're a little ways up in some of the revenue categories. Overall revenues down just a little bit from where we'd like to be. Primarily, we need to do some more property sales. The expenses for the staff and all that are a little bit below, so that's in good shape for expenses. In property management and economic development, we're switching away, the way we're billing some of that in there, so we're doing some budget amendments, but you can see that's about one hundred and eight percent now, so we'll be fixing that with some budget amendments, so everything's on track.
Is there any discussion? Can I receive? No, go ahead.
I'd like to move that we accept the budget report that's given to us.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the budget report that's given to us and to have received and placed on file. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay, oral presentations. At this time, we ask if there's anyone from the audience that wishes to come forward and present something that is not on today's agenda. You may do so. And in doing so, I'd like to just point out a couple things with generals for public participation. This is a time, do you want to add something that is not on the current agenda? You may do so, and please speak your, state your name and your address. Also, we ask that interested citizens may speak one time per item, and please leave your comments approximately five minutes. Is there anyone that'd like to present something not on today's agenda? Okay, we will move forward with new business. The time is now four oh five. First item under new business is under section A, special permits. And this is a request by Joshua Smith for a special permit to allow for the conversion of a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling located in a R2, one- and two-family residence district at 415 Linden Avenue. And that's on page ten. Oh, I'm sorry, staff report.
This is Graham with staff. The applicant's proposing the special permit in order to convert the existing single-family home on the property into a two-family dwelling. The request could have a negative impact on the surrounding areas. It could set precedence for other properties that are deficient in lot width and size to establish a two-family dwelling. However, there are several other two-family dwellings located within this general area. Surrounding properties on all sides are zoned R2, which is one and two-family residence district. The property is located on Linden Avenue, which is a local street. Franklin Street, which is just to the north, is a principal arterial. There is a twenty-foot platted alley adjacent to the north of the property, which the vehicles of the property would utilize to access the property. There would be no driveway access from the road for this property. The property's not within a floodplain area, and all services do serve the site. The future land use map designates this site as low-density residential, so the request would appear to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The applicant did purchase this single-family home with the plan to renovate it and rent it out. Some of the renovations include a new foundation, new windows and siding, and new electrical service. The applicant would now like to add a second unit to it as part of that renovation. The property is zoned R2, one- and two-family residence district, which does allow for two-family dwellings. However, converting an existing single-family home into a two-family home does require approval of a special permit, which is issued by the Board of Adjustment after recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The ordinance does have minimum requirements for a two-family dwelling in the R2 district. The property would meet the minimum lot size requirement of eight thousand square feet for a two-family dwelling, as the lot is eight thousand one hundred square foot in size. It won't, however, meet the minimum lot width of seventy feet, as the lot is only fifty-four feet wide, which is sixteen foot less than the minimum required. As part of the special permit request, the applicant will also be asking for a variance to that minimum lot width requirement. The zoning ordinance also requires that a minimum of four parking stalls be provided on the site for the two dwellings. Two stalls per dwelling. There is a single-stall detached garage at the rear of the property, and the applicant has indicated that the existing fence could be removed between the garage and the rear of the home to provide an additional three parking stalls. Staff is currently not in favor of the request as it is presented at this time, however, would be in favor of the request if an additional garage stall is provided to either the existing detached garage or a new two-stall garage is constructed. Staff is currently considering changing the zoning ordinance, so that would require a garage for new dwellings. The addition of a new garage stall would provide for an indoor garage space then for each unit. The immediate area is mainly comprised of single-family homes, however, there are several other two-family dwellings located in this general area. There's a two-family dwelling located within the same block at eighteen oh one to eighteen oh three Mulberry Street. It does have a twenty-by-twenty detached garage, a lot size of five thousand eight hundred, or five thousand eighty-five square feet, and a lot width of forty-five feet, a lot width of forty-five feet, both which would appear to be smaller than the property in question. Also, there is a property to the south in the two-hundred block of Linden Avenue, and then two additional properties within the one-hundred block of Linden Avenue that have two-family dwellings on them as well. In all of those instances, their lots are all less than six thousand square feet. Due to the fact that the property would nearly meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance for a two-family dwelling, except for the lot width, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area if an additional garage space is added. Access to the property would not change, as it would come from the existing alley, and no new driveway would be required. With all the vehicles parking in either the garage spaces or outdoor spaces, the look of the home from the street would not change significantly than if it were a single-family home. Therefore, as currently proposed, staff is recommending that the special permit request be denied, as staff is currently considering amending that zoning ordinance to require that a garage space be provided for all new dwellings, and having additional vehicles parked in outdoor spaces would not appear beneficial to the surrounding area and depict the property as a multifamily development. However, staff would recommend approval of the request for a special permit to allow for the conversion of the single-family home to a two-family home, as the request would be in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan. The addition of an additional garage stall would appear to be beneficial to the surrounding area and further preserve the residential nature of the neighborhood, and having an additional garage space would available would provide additional space for tenants to store items they own inside, providing security of personal items and reducing any unsightly appearance of outside storage, and subject to the following condition: an additional garage stall is either added onto the existing detached garage or a new two-stall garage is constructed, providing garage parking space for each of the two units. Someone else for staff?
Thank you, Shane. For those of you who'd like to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking from the microphones.
Hi, my name is Josh Smith. I'm the owner of the property. Basically, what I'd like to do with the parking would just put some carports up. You know, we put a lot of money in this house. It looks, it's gonna look very nice once it gets done. It's still kinda rough right now, but obviously, we're trying to convert it into a duplex, but it would look just like a house. It wouldn't change the appearance in the front. Like I said, it's gonna be one of the better houses in the neighborhood. I mean, obviously, it's not too far from here. Neighborhood's kinda rough. The house was rough. We put a lot of money in the foundation, siding, windows, new roof, electrical. You know, the parking's right off the alley, so it won't affect nobody parking in the street. I think overall, just it would benefit the neighborhood as well, especially as much of the money we're putting into the house. But I, like I said, I, we do have parking spaces, you know, next to the garage, but I mean, if we could just use a carport, or we could probably put up a garage. I really didn't wanna stick another twenty grand in the house, but I mean, if we could get some, you know, like a carport put up, you know, like a two-car carport. I don't know what you guys' recommendations would be. You know, I guess that's why I'm here, to kinda figure out what I need to do to make this happen, so.
I've got a quick question, if it's all right. This is Hall. Where's the access point for that? I would assume it's an upstairs unit and downstairs unit?
Yeah.
Is the access point in the back of the house or the front of the house?
It's on the side, it's on the side of the house. So there's actually gonna be, you know, one entry.
On the alley side or on the?
It, there'd be, it's gonna be on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah. And it'll be, they'll have a fence up from the neighbor's yard, going all the way around until the parking, and then obviously, a nice slab port around the house to, you know.
I guess, and the reason I ask that is, if the access point is at the front of the house, we're then looking at folks parking on the street, which we're, you know, we've had citywide an issue with. If it's at the back of the house, or on the side closer to the back, the access, I guess, whether with a privacy fence or with whatever, we can encourage the tenants to use that back lot. That becomes a little bit more acceptable for me to even consider a carport. We'll hear a little bit more from staff on their ideas, but.
Yeah, absolutely. No, there's not gonna be, there's, you guys kinda hit it on the head there. There is a couple apartments in the neighborhood that have like the two doors in the front. It kinda looks really tacky. They park all over the roads. This'll look like a normal house, you know, you won't even know really it's a duplex, 'cause how they're gonna park and come off, it's not coming from the front at all. They will have front access for the people that, you know, obviously run the front, or the, you know, the upper half of the house, but the downstairs, they would be entering from the back side.
Is the current single-car garage not usable? Is that, or?
No, it's, it's.
Versus the carports?
Uh, no, but, no, we can definitely, that's the one right there. We actually got a side that, and that looks a lot different. I mean, but we're, I was actually just gonna add some carports next to, next to the garage and actually lay some parking, so they can actually pull in the carport, you know, so the cars are secluded, you know what I mean, in there, so they're just, you know, cars lined up. I was just gonna add like a twenty-four-by-twenty-four carport, like five. So I'll have three stalls there, you know, and that way, they could just, you know, obviously the cars won't be all lined up. They could actually have some storage, so stuff ain't laying out in the yards. But that plans on being, you know, planning on getting that sided, you know, and I kinda talked to the, you know, when I was down here, and I didn't know exactly if we had to lay concrete, or if we actually used gravel, or kind of what the, you know, what the requirements were. They said basically, we could just kinda, you know, put some gravel down in there and, you know, do that for right now. But real clean, I mean, the whole thing is, this house, it'll look really, really nice once it's done. We got, you know, we've been working on this for a while. This is actually probably the fourth house that I actually fixed up. This one here, we just have so much, you know, and this is my first house I bought, man, and it had a limestone basement. It probably should've just been, you know, bulldozed, but we actually lifted it up and put new foundation on it. We actually, new roof, we got all the windows, siding. I mean, it'll be really, really nice, and it'll look just like a house. It'll fit right in with the neighborhood. It'll actually be really, you know, it's not gonna be an eyesore, it's not gonna be your typical, I mean, if you drive down that street, I mean, there's not a whole lot to look at. You know, this, this'll actually, you know, I think, bring value to the neighborhood, you know, even though it's gonna be a duplex. You won't be able to look back and say, man, that's, you know, that's, you know, you see duplex, and some, you know, don't look, look as nice as you'd like them to look. Overall, that's, you know, I was just trying to make two units, since we're sticking so much money into the house, a three-bedroom upstairs and, you know, a two-bedroom downstairs, completely redid from top to bottom, and that's kinda why I'm here, just to see what I need to do to make it happen.
And this is Mike Young. I'd just like to say thank you for fixing the place up and investing in the house and the neighborhood. And so I understand your point on that. I also see the city, from the staff recommendation on the garage, and just to confirm that the reason for the garage is to get cars off the street, but then also storage and that sort of thing. I mean, some of it's aesthetics, correct, as well?
This is Anderson with staff. Yes, I mean, we're trying to keep that residential feel, so that all of a sudden, you wouldn't have a four-stall parking lot instead of backyards, whereas the other houses would have a garage and one car parked out. We wouldn't want it to look like a parking lot instead of a backyard.
Okay. And then getting onto the carport, do we have in our current zoning ordinance?
Carports are legal. You cannot put up a metal carport in a residential area. It has to be a wood carport.
And the carport, is it, does it have to have, is it just the roof, or does it have to have three sides? Does it have to have it being closed in three sides? You just drive into one, or?
Carport, no, so it could be just a roof structure.
This is Schrader with staff. A carport does not have to have any sides. By definition, if it has more than one side, it's not considered a carport. But, so a wood-framed carport would be legal here. I don't know that it fully addresses the intent that we were going for, for providing, you know, the aesthetics of vehicles and other stuff being able to be enclosed.
It sounds like there's a balance here, and it's money, I'm sure, in some ways, that if you're trying to invest in the, you can't just throw unlimited funds in there.
Yeah.
For the garage, but at the same time, you know, you don't want just a ten.
Well, from like a forty thousand dollar project to like eighty, eighty-five thousand dollar project, and, you know, it's.
It sounds like we're trying to find that middle ground.
Yeah, it's trying to still make it everything acceptable and nice. We're not trying to get the impression of just load people in houses to rent them out and get money. I mean, the whole point is to get some return out of it, but make the neighborhood, to make the neighborhood look better, too. So I mean, typical, you know, I mean, I wouldn't think the downstairs unit had more than two cars, but, or, you know, I mean, maybe, but it's a pretty, I mean, if you looked at the lot, I mean, it goes back to that fence. I mean, so I mean, there's definitely room for three more. That's the whole backyard, so there's definitely room for more, more, you know, three cars or, you know, I mean, plus the garage there, but I mean, if you need to put a carport up, that would be.
But a garage could be just two sides or even three sides? If it was wood, were you talking, thinking about a wood carport?
Well, I guess I just found that, I didn't know you couldn't have like a carport, like a metal carport in town. I mean, so that's illegal in town, is it? Okay, I didn't, I didn't know that a lot of people would have them. Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. So I guess, you guys maybe are thinking maybe build like another stall onto it, maybe? Is that kind of the, so?
That was an option, yeah, either another small garage or attach onto that garage, whichever would work better.
This is Tack, and I'm just curious. I live down the street, and I've seen the neighborhood really change, I mean, for the better, with Brittanymore and things, and with having the carport, are you concerned that with those cars being exposed, if it could attract the possibility of being broken into? Because I know it is changing, but as the neighborhood changes, it just, you know.
Well, first off, I grew up in the neighborhood, so it was like, I don't live there no more, but it's like something that, you know, I grew up right across the street. So it's something I kinda invested back into the neighborhood, you know. So I, the neighborhood is a little concerning, you know, obviously, there's stuff that happens there. But I mean, yeah, that's kinda the whole thing. I was gonna go with the whole carport thing, kinda just, when I say carport, I was gonna actually be the twenty-four-by-twenty-four carport. I was just gonna, I kinda was getting some prices on and stuff like that, like they're gonna kinda get brought up here today as far as storage, where the car is not just a parking spot, but you probably want one or two covered, and, you know, there's probably gonna be a lawnmower, and you know what I mean, some other stuff that needs to be concealed, you know, you just don't want laying in the yard. The whole thing is, you know, whatever I need to do, I mean, obviously, I'm not going for, you know, I'm going for a clean look. I'm going for the, you know, I, I want this property to fit in and look good and not look trashy, and, you know, and so I'm, you know, I'm willing to, you know, I just don't know if, you know, putting up a, after I, you know, with all the budget and everything, if I really could put up, tell you the truth, spend another ten, twelve grand on, you know, another double-stall garage. But, you know, I guess that's why I'm kinda here, to see what I need to do, you know, or what's, you know, obviously, I don't know if that'd be, you know, I don't know if that would be good enough, or if I need to add a carport, or if I can get a carport to pass, or if I need to add three, you know, build onto this. I mean, let me, whatever I need to get, I guess, to kinda figure out what I need to do.
This is Gusterson. I guess my question would be, barring the fact that you're looking at changing the zoning ordinance in the future, to require the garage, past the ordinance as written out, is this gentleman needing all of the criteria necessary in order to be able to move forward with just putting a carport up?
I think it's not lot width, yeah.
This is Schrader with staff. It will need a variance to the lot width requirement to allow it to be converted from a single-family home to a duplex. So even though you're correct that we have not passed an ordinance requiring a single-family home or a duplex to have garage, that isn't the discussion phase, but this is a request that will require a variance, and that was, you know, a special permit, which is what you're reviewing, and the Board of Adjustment will have the final say on the special permit, and then the say on the variance, and it was our, our thought that this was, you know, a good opportunity to look at, okay, if we're gonna allow a variance and a special permit, even though it doesn't quite meet all requirements of the ordinance to be a duplex, does it fit the neighborhood? But maybe having a garage as part of that action would be advisable. So that was our thought process.
I guess I'm just looking at, this gentleman seems like he's put a lot of time and effort into this process, and, and having heard you say that there are a number of other properties within a two-block radius of this property that are actually two-family dwellings that are on much smaller lots than what this gentleman is dealing with, it, I don't think it's outside the purview of his asking for a variance to be able to complete his project and turn this into a two-family property. So I would like to make a motion that we would go ahead and approve his application for a variance for the special permit.
Second. Okay, it's been, there's a motion to approve and seconded that we approve the request for the special permit to allow for the conversion of a single-family home into a two-family home for the following reasons. Is that? Without the condition? Without conditions. Without condition. Any discussion?
My concern with this project, and actually, my grandparents live just around the block, so I pretty much grew up in the same neighborhood. My one concern, generally, I don't mind the garage issue. My one concern is that street that, that the house is facing, was it, is it Linden?
Yeah.
Is a fairly narrow street as it is, with one-sided parking, if I remember correctly, quite a few driveways, so there's not a ton of stalls, and with that upstairs unit having the front door, if there was some mechanism to incentivize tenants to use that back parking, I understand the concern about the garage. A carport, I'm not sure what that does with, with, with your budget, but I think it would minimize, it would incentivize the behavior that we, at the end of the day, with this ordinance, that ordinance change that could be coming up, and certainly a problem that we've identified throughout the city of too much on-street parking. If we can help incentivize behavior of tenants through providing an alternative that's better, frankly, than parking on the street, because it's covered. Trying to minimize the expense, but at the same time, recognizing the need to address on-street parking throughout the city. Got me a tough spot. Thanks.
And this is Mike Young, and I feel the same way. I think, I may not know on this, if the condition isn't in there for a lot of those same reasons, but I don't want you to take that personally. Either way, however the vote comes out, I'd recommend that you come back tomorrow and talk to city staff and figure out a way that maybe you could work within your budget, but also encourage the parking in the back and along the street. This isn't gonna be the end of it here, and it actually may pass, I don't know, so. But yeah, it's not anything personal. I thank you for what you're doing to fix up the property, and certainly, you gotta make it work financially, and so I, there's nothing to apologize for that. I certainly understand. I'm just hopeful there's, there may be a way to find some middle ground in that.
This is Tack, and I wonder if Operation Threshold, since it is an older neighborhood, an older home, could they possibly also provide some assistance? Something you need to look into? Because I, I think it's great that you're improving the neighborhood. I really do. I mean, we've been a couple since I've come, and we're trying to get things cleaned up, and you're doing everything right. So I, I'm in favor of this, but I share the concerns, is that we want, moving forward, we're, we're dealing with that precedence, that not everybody that comes forward may have the same intention, and yours certainly, to clean up and to provide a good home and make it look more aesthetically nice and invite, and we're just making sure that if we approve things like this, that it doesn't set a potential negative precedence in my opinion with that. We do want to encourage neighborhoods to be, you know, fixed up, for everybody. It just benefits everybody.
Like the, like the parking, the, the plan is to have everybody park in the back. Sure. We're, you know, we don't want people parking on the streets. That's the whole thing. We're trying to do the, the thing on the side and just kinda, you know, taking a look at the length of the lot. I mean, it's a pretty long lot, and I think we definitely have enough for parking, and the time we, you know, get done, you know, putting the concrete around it, stuff will lead right up to the doors, and I don't think they're gonna walk in that alley, you know what I mean, as far as, you know, but that's kinda the whole point of it.
Would you be open to putting a wood carport if this is approved? Would you be open if that condition was put on?
I don't even, what's a wood, I mean, is that like a garage, or what's a wood carport? Is it like a carport with wood, or, I mean, is it a garage?
This is Schrader with staff. I would say it is similar to a stick-built garage. It'd be a wood-framed carport, so it's got wood posts for the main beam, and then typically would have a more, you know, standard asphalt shingled roof. You know, I'm sure there are different variations of it, but, and I would just note for the commission's benefit, that the current motion, which has been seconded, I believe, is to approve it with no conditions. If that were to fail, another motion could be made that could add a condition.
Or was it possible to amend the motion?
That would be possible to.
Okay. So, pray back to the commission.
We want to answer that question, Mary. Is it something you would consider having the current single-stall garage plus, plus an additional?
A stall garage next to it? Yeah, I mean, that's the whole, I mean, I guess. I guess if I would, you know, if I would have, have to do that right now, I mean, obviously, we gotta do it, you know, we have, we have to do it, we have to do it to make it happen, you know? I mean, obviously, that wasn't in the plan or budget or, you know, but, you know, if that's what it would take, I mean, it's something we're gonna have to do. Would that be something I would have to do? I mean, could I complete the project and kinda, I mean, I'd have to complete the project first and then do the carport, and, you know, would that, I mean, is that before I rent it, or, I mean?
The motion. You could amend the motion, or a different motion to say that you'd allow him to convert it and upon a certificate of occupancy, then begin the carport process under that scenario or, you know, within a certain number of months.
This is Thornsberry. I'm, I'm getting more and more uncomfortable with this. Right now, the city of Waterloo does not have an ordinance that says you must have a garage. This is January, there is no ordinance. This man is coming before us with precedent already set in the neighborhood for lots that are smaller, that are already duplexes, that. I don't, we're going around something that I think is just not an appropriate comment for right now. This is his project now. If it was March or April, we don't know when the city council is going to approve that ordinance. Then if he were standing before us this summer, yeah, we'd have something to base the recommend, this recommendation by staff would have a foundation in an ordinance. Today, it does not.
This is Anderson with staff. Just as a note to that, though, but currently, the city of Waterloo does not have an ordinance that allows this lot to be converted into a two-family dwelling either.
But that's what the Board of Adjustment's responsibility.
But if you're saying that the other part's not in place, well, neither is this part. So I mean, we're making...
That's why I asked you for the variance.
That's right, yeah, for the variance, right.
So we're making reference to what we're recommending for the future. It's similar to him asking for the variance, so I think, I'm just saying, I think the two offset each other if you really kind of count points in there.
So, go ahead.
This is Schrader with staff. Just to expand upon that, even if staff was not proposing an amendment to the ordinance to require a garage, because there, this is not allowed without approval of both a special permit and a variance, that would be an appropriate condition if determined by staff, planning commission, board of adjustment to say, well, it's not allowed, but we feel it's okay in this instance, but a condition should be that we're going to add a garage because of the uniqueness of this request, because of the lot size, lot width, because of the, you know, it's predominantly, yes, there's some other duplexes in the area, because of the uniquenesses, we think it would be okay to be a duplex, but it should have a garage. I mean, that could be an appropriate condition to a request, even if we were not proposing an amendment to the ordinance. I just wanted to throw that out.
This is Whitehead. I guess I'm looking for a point of clarification on this. The motion that's on the floor is for a special permit to allow for the conversion, correct?
Correct.
But with no conditions, really, it should be a variance motion, correct?
This is Schrader with staff. No, the variance is entirely the purview of the Board of Adjustment. The Planning and Zoning Commission just will issue a recommendation on the special permit. Staff will be recommending the condition of the garage to both the special permit and the variance, but right now, the commission is just making a recommendation on the special permit.
And so then, Claire, if we approve, pardon me, the request for the permit to go through, you would still have to have a carport, and it would still be wood and not metal?
No.
No, nothing?
He would have to be able to provide four parking stalls.
Okay.
As the ordinance says today, yes, provide four parking stalls, and then he still needs the variance from...
Okay.
So, call a question.
Let's go ahead, and let's take a roll call vote. And a yes would be to approve the special permit, a nay vote would be to deny the special permit.
Thornsberry?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Young?
No.
Mehe?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Tack?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. I would just say, keep working with the city planning staff, and I just wish you very best for your project, and hopefully it will work all out.
Okay, thank you guys. Thank you.
Okay, the time now is 4:34. Our next item on the agenda is under section B under Platts. It's a request by GMJ Two Industries for the nine-lot final plot of Baltimore Field Second Edition, generally located north of Eureka Street and east of Vermont Street. It's on page nineteen. Staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The request for a final plot of Baltimore Field Second Edition for the development of a nine-lot subdivision. Six of the, six of the buildable lots would have frontage along Denver Street. Lots one and nine would have access off of either Denver Street or Eureka Street. All of the surrounding roads are classified as local streets. There are no sidewalks located adjacent to this property, and new sidewalks would be required with, as each lot develops. The property in question is zoned R1 RP Plan One and Two Family Residence District, and the property is not located within the flood hazard area. A fifteen-foot storm sewer easement is located along the north side of lots four and five. The final plot consists of nine lots, eight of which are buildable, to be developed into single-family homes. The nine lots to be platted are a total of 2.88 acres, with the buildable lots ranging from 9,340 square feet to 10,725 square feet in size. They would also have widths of approximately 75 feet and depths ranging from 125 to 140. The plaque shows a 10-foot utility easement along the fronts, along the front of all eight lots, as well as along the south side of lots one and nine. An extension of Denver Street will be constructed to service access for all eight buildable lots, and lot number six contains 1,124 square feet will be conveyed to the property or to the east to allow for additional access to their lot. The applicant recently went through the preliminary plat process where 12 lots were platted. The final plat of Baltimore Field First Edition was approved by city council on January 21, 2014, which contained four lots to the west along Vermont Street. The applicant is now ready to plot the final eight lots for development. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a final plat of Baltimore Field Second Edition be approved for the following reasons. The plat is in accordance with subdivision ordinance and can be served by existing utilities. The plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The plat will create additional infill development site within the primary growth area, and subject to the following conditions that are not in your packet, that the final plat approval through the city council is subject to an agreement between the two parties for the design and payment of which, of each party on a fair basis for the provision of storm sewer infrastructure necessary to be in compliance with all city ordinances. Two, that no construction shall begin on lots impacted by such infrastructure extensions until said agreement is in place. This includes any lots for which an easement may be necessary. And three, that any such agreement must be reviewed by city staff to ensure that the city of Waterloo approves the provisions of the agreement, so that the infrastructure of this, so the infrastructure is properly designed, constructed, and in accordance with all city codes and ordinances.
Any questions for staff? I just have one question. Is that addressing storm sewer or drainage, is that to reduce water issues?
Um, this is actually, well, this is actually kind of in coordinates with the next request, too. They're just figuring out a storm sewer system for the entire area, basically, is what that, those conditions were addressing.
This is Thornsberry. Is there a sidewalk required on this subdivision?
Yes.
So that would be a condition as well?
Um, that is actually just, it is required by city ordinances, so, and in the deed of dedication.
And the deed of dedication.
Number eighteen on page twenty-nine.
Am I right in assuming that these eight lots are similar to the 12 that were already approved by council?
Um, the 12 was the preliminary plat. The four that were original, I believe this, the four that were original, I believe, were one and, one-story and one-and-a-half story. I think this includes two-story also, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
So I have another question.
Okay.
Um, I don't know. Relationship to comprehensive plan. That paragraph on page twenty says that this property was open space and the designation was correct, although it could be updated to reflect this property.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but then, in your staff recommendation, you say in number two that that is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. But it's, it's not because of the comprehensive plan hasn't been changed to update this new property?
I guess...
In reality?
The comprehensive plan, of course, is a, I don't know, probably a sixty-page document, and within that is the future land use map, which is one page in there.
Right.
So the, the future land use map itself indicated it as open space. The comprehensive plan, of course, has, I think, about twenty-seven goals and policies. It talks about the development of land in there, so we definitely believe that this project meets those goals and policies, even though that one page, the future land use map, didn't actually correspond with this specific use of residential. So the rest of it, in terms of infill development and how to develop lots and all that, is definitely within the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Just as a, that's a good point to bring up. Generally, we do not update the future land use map per a request. At the end of the year, we'll go back and look at requests that didn't match up exactly with them. Because obviously, the future land use map is not a blueprint. It's a guide for the development of the city, so we'll go through and we'll update that probably on an annual basis. When we do that, we'll look at requests that were approved. We'll also look at new information that we have on new lots and if there's anything else that should change.
So the one you're referencing, though, was updated in 2003?
Correct.
Okay.
This is Schrader with staff. We also did an update to the future land use map in 2009. Doing an update every year might be a good idea. It's probably been a reaching goal to do, but every few years, we've generally tried to review the future land use map and do updates. I believe 2009 was the last one, and we, it's probably due again. We're actually talking about doing a complete overhaul of the entire comprehensive plan, but depending on how quickly that can be done, perhaps a review and update of just the future land use map might be in order as well.
When we do that, we'll go back and familiarize everyone with the 1978 plan, the 1987 plan, and all that, so you can see that it's been fairly accurate throughout the years. There's many years we'll look at it, and there won't be any necessary changes either, so.
And just to give the perspective from the school district, this property's been out of the school district for a while, but I think it was maybe 2009 or 2010, the Waterloo School District did a conference review of all the properties that the district had owned and collected over the decades, and the desire was to kind of clean everything out and just keep what the district needed, but if there was property the district didn't need at all, generally, first was to offer it to the city of Waterloo, and I think this was one of them as well, that the city bought for a dollar, and then some to offer just to the public for sale. And so we did two rounds of that, and the point of it was, one, to kind of clean it up from the district's perspective because of the maintenance and insurance and lawn mowing and that sort of thing were probably some costs. They weren't necessarily huge, but it was just kind of more things to do. The district needed. But then, secondly, the benefit would be to add more housing stock, more infill development, more kids, and really to build the tax base and kind of spread the tax base around, so. Those were the positive parts of it. The other part everybody looked at, I think, was making sure that there was adequate green space around and other parks, and I think in Waterloo, we have a pretty good amount of park space in our city, so. That was the whole point in getting, for the school district getting rid of this. Originally, I think it was the playground for, it was kind of connected to Irving, about two blocks away.
It might even have been up from West Black Williston. Was it a practice field for West Middle?
Yeah, yeah, which was West High, yeah.
I have a question. There was some comments in the tech review for updating the plat with, like lot six was to be renamed as track B and something like that, which is, is not just getting taken care of?
This is Schrader with staff. Yeah, we did receive an updated plat yesterday. We didn't get that distributed, but it did change the, what it, lot six to a track B.
Okay, if there is any other discussion, turn back to the commission for a motion.
This is Thornsberry. I move that we approve the request for the final plat of Baltimore Field Two Second Edition, and with the three conditions that were read to us that weren't a part of our package. The one was about the final plat going to city council with an agreement about the storm sewer. The second was no construction could begin until those agreements are complete, and the third one was the agreement has to be reviewed by city staff so that everything is in proper order with that infrastructure.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the final plat be approved. Is there any further discussion?
Who's seconded?
Oh.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
For the record, I was wrong about Irving. I don't, I forget why Baltimore Field is there. Irving's too far away.
It was, it was just...
No, Irving's only two blocks away.
Yeah, it was really just a practice field, an extra practice field, that was there.
I used to play softball there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I played tee ball there, but I don't, I don't know how the district got it unless, it must have been years and years and years ago.
Okay. Okay, the time now is 4:45. Our next request is by Blackhawk Contracting Development for the eight-lot final plat of Hawthorne Estates Second Edition, generally located south of Hawthorne Avenue and east of Vermont Street. That begins on page thirty-two. Staff report.
This is Andere with staff. The applicant is requesting to find a plat, eight residential lots, which would be located to the south of the intersection of Hawthorne Avenue and Denver Street. Area in question is zoned R1 RP Plan Residence District, has been zoned as such since April of 2011. To the north is R2 zoning with one- and two-family residences. The south half of the block in question is zoned R1 RP. To the east is single-family residence zone R2, and to the west is single-family residence zone R2, as well as some neighborhood commercial zone C1. Plaque consists of eight residential lots containing approximately 2.29 acres of land, which is located south of Hawthorne Avenue between Baltimore Street and Vermont Street. There are 10-foot utility easements located along the frontages of all lots within the subdivisions, including corner lots. There are also 30-foot building setback lines showing on the frontages and rears of the lots in the subdivision, which is the minimum requirement for the R1 One and Two Family Residence District, which would also be the same for the R1 RP. Lot widths range from 70 to 90 feet wide. The ordinance notes that the required sideyard setback in the R1 is 10% of the lot width at the building line. Lot sizes range from 9,167 square feet to 12,614 square feet, and the proposed lots appear to be similar and compatible with other residential lots within the surrounding area. Submitted plat appears to meet the intent of the subdivision ordinance. Proposed lot numbering sequence is acceptable as shown, and the deed of dedication does reference the sidewalks that need to be constructed along the frontages of all the lots within the subdivision. Staff is recommending approval of the final plat of the Hawthorne Estates Second Edition as the plat can be serviced by the extension of existing utilities in the area. The plat will create an infill development site within the primary growth area, as well as additional housing development options within the city. Three, that the request would not appear to have negative impact upon the area, upon traffic conditions in the area, and with the following conditions, that the final plat approval go through the city council is subject to the agreement between the two parties for the design and pavement by each party on a fair basis, for the provision of the storm sewer infrastructure necessary to be in compliance with all city ordinances, that no construction shall begin on the lots impacted by such infrastructure extensions until said agreement is in place. This includes any lots for which an easement may be necessary, and that the, any such agreement must be reviewed by city staff to ensure that the city of Waterloo approves the provisions of the agreement, so that the given structure is properly designed, constructed, and in accordance with all city codes and ordinances.
Questions for staff?
The handout that was given, it was just the final page was not there. Is that correct?
Yes.
This is Gustafson. One of the questions that I was asked to bring up was when they tied into the sewer system from the Vermont onto those lots, they have just done a terrible job of refilling the street, and, you know, there are just huge dips into the street from where they brought those in. Does the city not have any responsibility for inspecting to make sure that they leave the property the same way they found it? Because, but we didn't have, our street was, had just been replaced a couple of years ago. ago.
Jerry Thorsten, City Engineer. Yes, they have to get excavation permits to do those, and we do have an inspector that checks on those. And because of the holidays and things, we may be somewhat behind right now, but typically we check those pretty regularly. So if they're in poor condition, the contractor will have to come back and fix them up, make them passable until they can do the permanent repairs.
Could you please? Our neighborhood association, I got a number of phone calls from people.
We'll let staff take a look at it. Yeah, they're just temporary patches now. That's not the permanent patch. They were done late enough, I believe, in the construction season that they couldn't do a permanent patch. So that's part of the issue that you deal with in this, especially in this climate with the conditions that we have. But they should be able to do a little better than that.
The developer on the other end did the same thing, and he did leave this area the same way. So I'd say it's shot of workmanship.
Have staff look at those.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? For those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into microphones. Okay, seen none. Turn back to commission for discussion or motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the request for the final plat at Hawthorne Estates Second Edition with the, with the conditions as stated.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve. Per this request, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, the time now is 4:50. Our next item under new business is encroachment agreements. There's a request by Tony Huff for an encroachment agreement to allow for the construction of a new sign to encroach nine feet into the 12-foot utility easement located at 621 Ainsborough Avenue, begins on page 44.
This is Andero Staff. This is a request for that encroachment agreement. The sign would be six feet tall and approximately four and a half feet wide and be located within the 12-foot platted utility easement. There is an eight-inch sanitary sewer line that travels along the westerly line of this 12-foot easement and is approximately one foot from the westerly property line and is buried seven feet below the ground level. There is forest drain tile located within Ainsborough Avenue to the west and Bismarck Avenue to the south. There is also a 36-inch storm sewer located within Bismarck Avenue to the south. In the past, encroachment agreements the city has entered into have included provisions that allow the city to give notice of termination of the agreement if the right of way or easement is needed for any future public purposes. As noted, the applicant would want to construct a four and a half foot wide by six foot tall sign for one of the building's tenants just to the west of the building. The applicant noted that the sign would be approximately five feet from the west wall of the building. Therefore, the furthest edge of the sign would encroach approximately nine to nine and a half feet within this existing 12-foot easement. Since the sanitary sewer is one foot to the east of the west line of the easement, this would mean that the west post of the sign would be approximately one and a half feet east of the sewer, and the bottom of the sign post and the ground would be approximately three and a half feet above the sewer. Originally, the easement upon the site in question was 16-foot wide, and the applicant received approval to vacate the east four feet that, of that easement in February of 2003 for the purpose of constructing the building on the site today. Proposed sign and sign post would be constructed from a PVC material. The applicant has indicated that they intend to bore two holes for the sign post and place the post 42 inches into the ground, as well as noting that there will not be a footing for the proposed sign. Has indicated that the sign could be easily removed if needed, since there, since there is no footing in the case, it comes into conflict with service of that sanitary sewer within the easement. At the most recent technical review committee meeting, the engineering department, Waterloo Waterworks and Mid-American Energy expressed opposites and concerns to this encroachment request, noting that allowance of the sign to encroach into the easement would set precedence for others to request for similar encroachments. In December of 2013, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of a similar request by American Steel to the south at 735 Ainsborough to place a monument sign in a utility easement along Ainsborough Avenue. However, that proposed sign had a concrete footing 42 inches into the ground, which could have created an issue with moving the sign if the sanitary sewer in the easement didn't reservice. Staff feels that the proposed sign in the request could be easily moved if needed if the sewer needs to be serviced in the future. This is staff's recommendation that the request for the encroachment agreement located at 621 Ainsborough be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have negative impact upon the surrounding area, as it would appear that the sign could be easily moved if needed. The bottom of the sign post closest to the sewer would be approximately three and a half feet above it, and with the following condition, that there be a sign and executed encroachment agreement.
Questions for staff? Thank you. For those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphones. If there's no discussion, we have a motion.
I'll move, this is Mike Young. I'll move for approval of the request, subject to the condition that a signed and executed encroachment agreement be obtained.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the request for the encroachment be approved. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, time is 4:55. Our last item on new business is the administrative, administrative rules amendment. There's a request by the city Waterloo for an amendment to the city Waterloo Planning and Zoning Commission administrative rules, and those begin on page 54.
This is Schrader with staff. We had submitted a draft meeting that was discussed at the last planning and zoning commission meeting. For the most part, it's a lot similar to that. I did add a few more sections where we were adding some suggested wording to kind of address the issue of votes, particularly votes that go contrary to staff recommendation just to kind of address documentation of why a request is being acted on, you know, what reasonings for commission's recommendation, just to assist staff, assist the council when they make their vote, and to assist if anything ends up, you know, in a legal proceeding. So I guess I don't necessarily need to go through everything. I can answer any questions that you have. Like 10 minutes before the meeting, saw Jerry, I think you have a few grammatical things that's.
Yeah.
Open to any changes.
We don't need to go through those now. I mean, they're simple things.
Any questions?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for going through this exercise, because it does help. I talked about, we just went through a lot with, well, we've had a couple of controversial ones. Summerland Farms was very controversial, but then also what I went through on the applicant's side with Nottingham, which is still going on. And so it was helpful for me to be on the other side of it. And as part of that was seeing as an applicant, one thing that really helps is if there's something wrong with your plan, if you hear why. So you have a chance to go back and look at it and change it and correct it, or just say, you know, and I can't change that. For instance, with the garage that we had today, if you can't just financially make it work, you, then at least you know, but you know what you're dealing with. So that's where it helps if there is a vote that, and now when you deal with city staff in making your application, they'll, they'll tell you right away if something doesn't look right and you should go back and change it. As well, they go through, there's a technical review and all that to give you that opportunity. This would just allow for that to be, to take place, I guess, during this meeting as well. And also, I think, city council as well.
This is Whitehead. On the 3.8 commission action, the added verbiage there, unless request changes significantly?
Correct.
What do you consider a significant change? I know, as Mike referenced, Summerland changed a few different times, you know, from what type of structure it's going to be Nottingham, and Nottingham, forgive me, but I've been catching up on minutes with that. It didn't necessarily have a lot of different changes. It was more of floodplain-type stuff and those type of issues. Maybe not necessarily considered a significant change. Kind of leaves a vague interpretation. I guess I'm open to your comments.
That was Mike.
This is Schrader with staff. First, I would note that, as currently worded, it provides for a four-month waiting period if it's been acted on by council. So in most instances, you know, including the ones you referred to, where items have come back to the commission, that's been before it's gone on to council, so there was no waiting period. But as to what would constitute a significant change, we intentionally worded it that way to be a little open-ended, to provide discretion as to what could constitute a significant change. Generally speaking, if you try and define what's going to constitute a significant change in here, it's going to probably, number one, be extremely lengthy, and number two, still not cover everything that it probably should cover and potentially get you into, you know, more issues of what is or what is not a significant change. But generally speaking, like you're, if we're dealing with a site that's zoned R3, RP Planned Residence District, and they're requesting a site plan amendment to allow a 12-plex or two 12-plexes, for example, you know, if that request had gone all the way to council and been denied, there'd be a four-month waiting period. We would consider it to be a significant change if it changes it from two 12-plexes to whatever it was, six duplexes. That's a pretty significant change. There wasn't any significant opposition to duplexes. Most of the opposition was to the multifamily and to drainage issues, and the drainage issues were, you know, trying to be addressed, but the actual use, you know, that was a significant change. So that would be an example of what we would consider to be a significant change and would suggest that it wouldn't necessarily need that four-month waiting period. But that four-month waiting period only kicks in if it actually gets acted on by council.
This is Anderson with staff. There's not too many requests that probably go all the way to council, are denied, and then come back to the commission that are very similar. I mean, they either give up because it's been denied, or hopefully they will take into account why it was denied by council and make a significant change to what would allow it to be approved. So there's always going to be some that are hard to define, but hopefully the majority of them, and again, I think those are very few, would be, definitely be significant.
I wonder if it's just maybe significant, like more than 50% of the project. And the reason I bring it up is, like you mentioned, going from eight-plex to 12-plex. And going back to Mike, when you're in the audience, I know, it took a while to kind of get the ropes down and, and get the lingo and the understanding from this side when I first came on, when I first came to mission, I was more like a regular, have as much knowledge as maybe someone coming in with a request. They may see things differently, and I'm just thinking with the Nottingham, that there's a chance that that could go to court. I mean, I'm just thinking, it could be that one case that it might be worth putting a little bit more defined, something like 50% change in the project, just because one person's interpretation is significant, is going to vary with another person's significant, and just avoid that, that case that could come up. I'm just thinking, if we had something, that way, if you had something like maybe 50%, then you could justify what eight to 12, that would be more than 50%. But someone could say, well, if it's just, they could say, that's just not a very significant change, because it's only one, one change in the numbers. But from a project's point of view, that's a huge change. I'm just thinking legally, if it gets out of proportion. Because Nottingham was an example. There was some heated tension that was going on, and I don't know, some people will take it to court, but I could tell that, that was some strong feelings there, and they were not going to let it rest, and I'm just trying to think ahead.
There's some other areas in the ordinance to talk about, minor versus major, so we can look at those and maybe make reference for this.
Right, but quantifying 50% could be extremely difficult. Would, let's look at, let's say the original proposal is one 12-plex, and the resubmital is 12 single-family homes. That's completely different request, but, I mean, is that 50%? I don't know how you quantify that. Or, you know, let's, let's say that the use itself doesn't change at all. It's a proposed 12-plex, there's no opposition to the 12-plex, they're just opposed to a setback requirement, for example. And then if they resubmit it and meet the setback that the opposition was requiring to, you know, since they're kind of addressing the main opposition, we would consider that to be a significant change. But I don't know how you would quantify that, is, is that 50%? I mean, another alternative might be to, you know, add to the wording, unless the request changes significantly as determined by the city planner. Lots of other provisions.
Yeah, not leaving that in your hands.
There are lots of other references in the zoning ordinance to as determined by the city planner.
I think the city council part is the bigger one in there. If it never makes it to council, you know, we don't necessarily have to worry about how much is changed before they bring it back, so.
I just tried to think, because it felt like the arguments, if I, I don't know if anyone else felt that, it was like, well, we're looking at one thing our way, and we're kind of making all decisions, and you just have to go with it. And that isn't necessarily true, but it's the perception, I guess I was looking at. Because that's the feeling I got from some of the feedback at our previous meetings, is that, well, you're just, and not in exact words, but it got the impression that, well, planning and zoning, the staff can do whatever they want, and this is their interpretation, and it's wrong. And I guess I'm just trying to see if we could kind of look ahead to see if there's some wording somewhere that would qualify, this is where we're coming from, so it's not just because it's the whim of the staff, it's just that there is some, you know, credible reason behind it. Does that make sense to everyone? Because it got very emotional the last three months.
You could use that word, the whim of the staff.
That's a better one.
It happens in every staff report. What are you talking about?
I just tried to.
It's the dartboard.
I understand the concern on significant is somewhat vague, just inherently. But on the other hand, once you start to quantify or to put it down, just as we've talked about, that's so difficult. It kind of, this is kind of a cop-out saying, but kind of, you know it when you see it. In my mind, I, I, I think of that Nottingham was not a significant change. It was mostly tweaks to, you know, setback requirements, some requirements that needed a dedication, like number of garages or sprinkler system requirements, something like that. But that Summerland Farms was in that corner part that it was, yeah, it was, what, four plexes or eight-plexes?
12-plexes.
12-plexes. Then it came back and it was duplexes. And all the neighbors were still here, but they all looked at it like, no, that, that sounds reasonable. And so that wasn't really significant change. It was still the same part of land. I don't know how you'd qualify, quantify that, though, how that would be different. So you come back to, it's imperfect, but it might be the best, just saying significantly as decided by city planner or planning and zoning commission or city council.
And that's a good point, and that's, yeah. A nice theory coming from them, and that does make sense.
I would say it shouldn't be city council, because.
No, I'm sorry, so then we'd have, add another step to it. In, in practical terms, if you're an applicant and you get turned down, your options are to continue, you can, no matter what, you can go on to city council or Board of Adjustment, correct?
Well, this one's just, would essentially be talking primarily about something that was turned down by council.
By council, yeah.
And if they're resubmitting it to the planning commission and don't want to wait the four-month time period.
What happens is, I would think, most applicants, practical terms, you just go back and say, I'm done. Or you go back and say, I'm not going to take it to city council, I'm going to try to go back, see what I can do. I'm going to price out the garages, you know, is it going to cost $20,000 or five? Because depending on that, maybe I'll change it, like for the example we had today. Or maybe you do go to council and just go.
I would note, the Board of Adjustment has very similar administrative rules, and they have a similar section, which does have the wording about unless significantly changed.
This is something fairly, just like happening.
This is something fairly, just like happened to catch in 3.1. I know the intent was to avoid Election Day. Election Day of 2016 is the second Tuesday of the month. Not that big of a deal, and I know it's kind of freakish that I know that, but.
Is it?
Oh.
Yeah, I know.
Are you trying to tell us something?
No, not at all.
Sitting Election Day has to be the first Tuesday following the first Monday.
Yeah, well, yeah, it can't be the first of the month.
Yeah.
It's, I know. Yeah. So, I don't know if that's something that you somehow want to add verbiage there to, to address, but in two years, you're going to be facing the same thing that you're trying to avoid now.
I would, I mean, we could certainly add more wording. I would argue the wording could cover it, because it says, when the regular meeting falls on a legal holiday or other conflicts arise, we could interpret that as a conflict has arisen and therefore, put it back to the first Tuesday.
Okay.
And again, I apologize for my absence the last part of the year. Five-five. I think we do a pretty good job of this already, most of us. Some of us like to talk more than others. And I know, being in the chair position for, I think, I think you elected me two or three times, Carolyn. I, I know certain people like to speak more than others, and I guess I'd like a little bit of background as to why they added, especially for the denial votes. I understand having some feedback for an applicant helps, but one of the goals, too, that we've been trying to reach is shorter meetings. And I think if people start to expound upon why they voted a certain way, we could end up adding easily a half hour, if we have long agendas, to a meeting. So, I'm just curious of some background there.
You want me to go?
Try it.
I would just say, I mean, number one reason is for feedback to the applicants, but probably equally as important is going to court. Obviously, we need to have reasons why, if we have cases that are going to go to court, why they were denied if they met all the requirements of the zoning ordinance and/or the subdivision ordinance. So, we need to have something to be able to defend the actions of if we go to court.
We have seen case law requests where essentially, the court has questioned, well, why was it, you know, recommended for approval, or why was it approved in the manner it was, or why was it, you know, recommended for denial or denied in the way it was? Being able to have something, I mean, we're not, you know, non-controversial items is, you know, probably not really an issue. And obviously, where the end action differs greatly from the staff's recommendation is not that frequent of occurrence either. But that's kind of, and, you know, Noel mentioned too, and I think the third one, which is also very important, is the council. I mean, you can have a council really scratching their head, trying to figure out, well, why did the commission vote this way, if there's nothing really that provides any indication.
And I think they all kind of go back and forth to each other. Obviously, you know, if, let's say, you deny something, but you give the reasons why, as an applicant now, they have, again, this is a recommending body, now they have some time before going to council, they may want to come up to council and say, hey, this was recommended for denial because of these two reasons, we have fixed those two reasons in moving ahead, and now there's no opposition or something. Again, I think it helps all the requests.
Well, a lot of those, you guys will, you know, your staff report in the past has provided enough information as to, you know, what ordinance is it against and what's it help on. So, the ones that I think of with this is the encroachment stuff, you know, we had one tonight. I'll be quite honest, I was on the fence on it, but because of what we've done in the past in that same area. So, it's, you know, you start setting that certain precedent in different areas, well, you kind of lay it out, so, okay.
And we tried to point out what we thought was the differences. I mean, the other one would have been a huge basis, one was basically two polls, what are the likelihood that the sewer's going to need to be fixed over a 40-year period or something? Go pull the polls off, fix it, and then you can put them back in later. It's a hard thought, no. You could see out in the technical review, a lot of utility companies that would have to mess with the sign or are against it. At the same time, these are, they're difficult to build on lots to begin with, because they took some of that frontage away when they did Ainsborough, so we thought it was a good compromise.
And some of it, I think, goes also to the different roles that we have. I mean, when we break down our agenda, special permits are treated differently than plats that are treated differently. I think encroachment agreements are probably pretty subjective, can kind of be for any reason, it doesn't feel right for the neighborhood. Whereas, I think a plat is more technical, now rezoning is more, does it feel right for the neighborhood sort of thing? And there are others that are on here, too, so it depends on kind of what you're doing. And that gets down to the philosophical part of it, is generally, it's the property owners that are coming here saying, I want to do something to my property. And if it's changing it, like zoning, it's saying, okay, I'm at the, you know, I'm in a community and I need to take into account the community's needs. You always do that for every request, but if it's something that's much more technical, you're saying, all right, city council has set these rules, and if I meet all these rules, I want to do something to my property that's within these rules. If I can't do it, please tell me why. And you can kind of point to one of those rules as to why I can't do something to my property.
And Dustin, you referenced, you know, the staff reports. You know, our goal with the staff report is to try to make it so you don't have any questions. We try to, we try to take a look at what questions you've asked in the past and make that a part of the staff report. So, going ahead, you have all the information. Obviously, each request is a little bit different. There's going to be questions out there based on different requests, but that's our goal, is to try to provide you with all the information you need.
And I think you guys do a very good job of that. I've lost track how many years I've been on the commission, so I know I've gotten a few of them.
I just wanted to compliment the staff on adding the addition of the page numbers.
Yes, thank you.
That is wonderful.
I would like to thank the commission for recommending it. As the one that has to find them on here, it was a lot easier for me, too.
Yeah.
So, do you need a recommendation for approval of these?
Well, it's not a recommendation, it would be approval. This isn't something that goes on to the city council. This is the commission's administrative rule. So, if you are comfortable with them, we would need a motion to approve, and it requires a two-thirds vote, so six of the members present, so I'm doing my math right, I believe that's six of those present. If you're not comfortable with them yet, you wouldn't have to act on them now. I don't necessarily know if there's anything real pressing with them.
Thorn's very, the little edits and all commas and, should I go through those here? Do you want to hear those?
You could include that in the motion, as far as grammatical corrections as seen by staff.
Say again?
You could include that in your motion.
Okay.
And have it as grammatical corrections as seen by staff or as recommended by yourself, I guess.
Grammar queen. All right, want a motion?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the City of Waterloo Planning and Zoning Commission Administrative Rules with the adoption date of January 6, 2015, with the few grammar corrections that are needed. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the planning and zoning amendments as stated. Is there any final discussion? All those, do we need a roll call or just general vote?
General.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Any discussion items?
This is Schrader's staff. This is further discussion at the front of the agenda, at the top of the agenda is a new section, General Rules for Public Participation. I sent out a draft of that, got a lot of feedback from the commission, pretty varying. We went ahead and kind of tried to take a little middle ground based on feedback, put it on here. This does not have to be, you know, a finalized version of it by any means, so if anyone has, you know, any additional thoughts, go ahead. You can talk about it now, in the interest of time. You can shoot me an email and we can keep on trying to further tweak this.
Yeah, are you putting this both electronically on everything that is put on to the website for agenda, those kinds of things, and printed agendas? Is that included in both processes?
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Now, is not any more discussion? Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We need to adjourn.